It's refreshing to see the many faces out there. It's very important for your city government to function. It's very important that we have citizen participation. So on behalf of the City Commission, I extend a welcome to you all. At this time, I'd like to call on Reverend Dan Phillips, pastor of Grace Fellowship, to deliver our invocation. And I don't see Reverend Phillips here, so I'd like to call on Reverend Ted Stackpole. Please come forward and deliver our invocation. Will you please rise? And that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Matt Rennells.
Do bow your heads with me tonight. Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening for the opportunity to recognize so many bright young scholars that are here tonight. Lord, we thank you tonight for each and every person that has come into this place, Lord, to be a part of this city government. We thank you for all of those who serve and give their lives to the benefit of the city of Palatka. We ask, Lord, that your will would be done this evening, and we pray all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Now, a clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Myers?
Present.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Kitchen?
Present.
Commissioner Leary?
Here.
Commissioner Roebuck?
Present.
Members present in county.
We have a forum. I'll call a meeting to order. Commissioners, you received copies of the minutes of 10-9-2014. What is your pleasure?
Motion by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Kitchen. Is there any discussion?
Questions? Questions being called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign. The minutes stand approved. We're now on item one of the agenda, public recognition presentations. We have two proclamations, and I would like for Mr. Rodney Phillips, please come forward. Mr. Phillips, would you please stand there, please? Our first proclamation has to do with National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. City Palatka Proclamation. Whereas hospice and palliative care offer the highest quality services and support to patients and family caregivers facing serious and life-limiting illness, hospice and palliative care providers take the time to ask what's important to those they are caring for and listen to what their patients and families say. Whereas skill and compassion of hospice and palliative care professionals, including physicians, nurses, social workers, therapists, counselors, health aides, and clergy provide comprehensive care focused on the wishes of each individual patient. Whereas through pain management and symptom control, caregiver training and assistance, and emotional and spiritual support, allowing patients to live fully up to the final moments, surrounded and supported by the faces of loved ones, friends, and committed caregivers. Whereas the provision of quality hospice and palliative care reaffirms our belief in the essential dignity of every person regardless of age, health, or social status, and that every stage of human life deserves to be treated with the utmost respect and care. And whereas every year more than one and a half million Americans living with life-limiting illness and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States, while more than 468,000 trained volunteers contributed 22 million hours of service to hospice programs annually. And whereas these hospice and palliative care providers encourage all people to learn more about options of care and to share their wishes with family, loved ones, and their healthcare professionals. Now therefore, I, Vernon Myers, Mayor of the City of Palatka, Florida, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim November 2014 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Awareness Month in the city of Palatka, and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life and to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs and witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and call to be affixed the seal of the city of Palatka, Florida, on this twentieth day of November in the year of our Lord 2014, Vernon Myers, Mayor, Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Allegra Kitchen, Phil Leary, and James Norwood Jr. While Mr. Phillips is here, and I'll ask him to speak after I deliver the second proclamation. And this proclamation has to do with Children's Grief Awareness Day. City of Palatka Proclamation. Whereas children who have a loved one die, especially a close family member, experience intense inner turmoil, and whereas every school district has students who have experienced personal loss, and there are more grieving children than most of us realize. And whereas on April the 7th, 2011, the Florida Legislature resolved to observe Children's Grief Awareness Day in Florida annually on the Thursday before Thanksgiving. And whereas Children's Grief Awareness Day provides an opportunity for all of us to raise awareness of the painful impact that the death of a loved one has in the life of a child, an opportunity for all of us to recognize and support the millions of grieving children across the nation, the thousands of grieving children right in our own communities, and the grieving children we know and see in our daily lives. And whereas parental grief is boundless and touches every aspect of a parent's being, and whereas Harry's Kids Pediatric Services provides special services to children and teens with life-threatening illnesses and offers grief support and therapeutic camps for young people and their loved ones who have experienced a loss. Now therefore, I, Vernon Myers, Mayor of the City of Palatka, Florida, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby proclaim Thursday, November the 20th, 2014, as Children's Grief Awareness Day in the city of Palatka, and applaud the work currently being accomplished and support grieving children on their journey toward hope after a loved one dies. And witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and call to the seal of the city of Palatka to be affixed this 20th, twentieth day of November in the year of our Lord 2014, Vernon Myers, Mayor, Commissioner Mary Lawson Brown, Allegra Kitchen, Phil Leary, and James Norwood, Jr.
Just like to thank the city of Palatka for this opportunity to come today and for the proclamations. It's very much our honor to serve the people of Palatka and Putnam County. Children's Grief Awareness Day is actually today, the 20th of November, and we have a program going on at our facilities here today. And it's really nurses and the people and the doctors that are involved in the care that have such a devotion to that care, and the children that we serve and also the adults that we serve that are struggling with loss, and then taking care of those people at the end of life. We're very happy to serve Putnam County and Palatka, and thank you for this opportunity.
Mayor, while he's coming up, can I have a point of personal privilege? This is also National Prostate Awareness Month, and as one in six men will develop prostate cancer in their lifetime, strongly urge that they get strings and checkups, and this is a deadly killer for men.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is Mr. Jonathan Griffith. He is our city projects manager and grant administrator. And Mr. Griffith is one of the talented young people working for our city in the bright spot in our administration. He has been designated by the Florida Redevelopment Association as a redevelopment professional after the completion of an intensive five-course training exercise. Courses included redevelopment financing and funding, redevelopment housing, economic redevelopment, marketing, incentives, and operations and capacity building. Certification provides a level of knowledge and professionalism in the field of redevelopment. Is also intended to encourage development and maintenance of professional competence for practicing redevelopment administrators. With this achievement, Mr. Griffith has added another skill set to his extensive track record of riverfront and downtown redevelopment, which provides a direct benefit to the citizens of Palatka and Putnam County. Congratulations, Jonathan. And I said, we're all very proud of you, and thank you for all your hard work. Would any commissioner like to add anything?
Yes, Mayor. Actually, today Jonathan received some great accolades from the golf course advisory committee for his work at the golf course, and certainly he's an asset with his landscape architect background and degree, and the many things that are happening on the riverfront in downtown are certainly a part of his success, and most of all, he's a gator.
It's a bad word.
Yeah, that's right. Commissioner Kitchen?
Yep, Jonathan, I'd just like to say thank you for answering all my questions and working with me all this time and being patient. I appreciate it. And doing a good job on top of it. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd also like to say I thank Jonathan for his innovation that he has demonstrated, not only with the riverfront project, but projects throughout the city, and programs as well. So you've had a big hand in most of the stuff that's going on in Palatka for the last few years, and I really appreciate all that you did.
Would you like to say anything, Jonathan?
No, not at this time.
So we're down at that place on the agenda that many of you are here for, and that is the recognition of our student of the month. And the outstanding youth being recognized here tonight exemplify many of the traits we all desire in our children. They're being recognized by their teachers, schools, and community for the traits of scholarship, leadership, and social skills which they have so ably exhibited. These qualities are inherent in our young leaders here tonight, and we urge our honorees to continue on the same road as they will find these attributes will lead to continued success in the future. These outstanding young people represent the very best of our students of today, and we fully expect that those being recognized tonight will achieve greater accomplishments in the future. So as I call your name, would you please come forward with your sponsor, Josie Bergen? And if you'll hold your applause, we're going to applaud them all after we introduce and make the presentations. Josie, you want to face me? Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Josie Bergen is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Browning Pierce Elementary, given this twentieth day of November 2014. Congratulations. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Julie Willhite is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at C.L. Overthirb Jr., 6th Grade Center, given this twentieth day of November 2014. Congratulations. Danielle, look at me. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Danielle Palé-Pogu is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Children's Reading Center Charter School, given this twentieth day of November 2014. Congratulations, Senator. Congratulations. Good job. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Teddy Lee Hale III is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at E.H. Miller School, given this twentieth day of November. Congratulations, Senator. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Francie Williams is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at James A. Long Elementary School, given this twentieth day of November 2014. Congratulations. Okay, well, we'll get another certificate.
You'll hold that one?
Yeah.
Did you read your correct spelling once?
It's fancy. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Deesha Patel is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Kelly Smith Elementary School, given this twentieth day of November. Congratulations. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that John Wilkerson III is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Mellon Elementary School, given this twentieth day of November 2014. Congratulations. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Sarah Mays is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Mosley Elementary School, given this twentieth day of November 2014. Congratulations. Now, we have two recipients of the next one, Abria Campbell and Aleah Campbell. And I have a notation here that says twins. I would have never guessed. So Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Abria Campbell, who's Abria? Abria Campbell and Aleah Campbell is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Palatka High School, given this twentieth day of November 2014. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Caleb Baker is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Penile Baptist Academy, given this twentieth day of November 2014. Congratulations. I'm sorry. Mackenzie King. Mackenzie King. Hello, Mackenzie. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that Mackenzie King is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at the Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, given this day's twentieth day of November 2014. Congratulations. Outstanding Student Award presented by the City of Palatka City Commission. This is to certify that J.C. Stackpole is awarded this certificate for academic excellence, leadership, citizenship, and attendance at Putnam Edge High School, given this twentieth day of November 2014. Your city commission recognizes and salutes these outstanding students, and we want each of you to know that we are counting on you to continue on this path. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in recognizing our award. I'm sure that our honorees will agree that they did not accomplish this honor alone. We join them in recognizing their parents and caregivers, the people who provide the love and care and guidance necessary to nurture a child and give them direction. In this modern world in which we live, we all know what an important role we as parents play in our children's lives. The fact that your child is being recognized tonight is testament to your positive influence in their formative years. We know that you will keep up the good work in spite of the challenges for your child's sake. And last but not least, we pay tribute to our teachers and administrators for their hard work and dedicated service in the education of these students. Your effort makes the city of Palatka and Putnam County a better place for all of us. Thank you from your city commission. We're going to take a five-minute recess, and we're going to take some photographs, and I'll ask all the students to stay up here, and everyone else to take their seat.
We came last week.
We're an item to the public comments section of the agenda. Anyone is invited to address the commission. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and it's unreasonable to expect any action to be taken on any topics discussed if they're not on the agenda. So having said that, we'll open up public comments. Please come to the podium, sir. And I ask that you state your name and address, sir.
Yes, this is Roger Nihout, 103 Woodlong Road, Saksuma.
Mr. Nihout, welcome.
Thank you.
Your comment, please.
Well, first of all, good evening. It's a great day to be here. It's actually a day to celebrate. As a man, a law enforcement officer, it should have never been leaves a great city to heal. And finally, some relief for me. First off, I'm a victim and a survivor of an attempted murder. I'm left with brain damage and numerous medical issues directly relating to the attempt on my life. Chief Getchel let this guy go with no charges being brought on October 21st, 2010. We were being harassed by a very aggressive fellow, so much we had to obtain a restraining order. As we were in fear of our lives, he shows up, as he had done daily for over a month, making threats to us, and we had restraining orders signed by the judge. He approached us as usual, trying to start a fight. He kept backing me up. As we reached his plane, he was making a call, started the airplane, and left at a high rate of speed. We had already called 911. Palatka police were on the way. Next thing I know, here's an airplane coming at me so fast, I had no time and no place to go. I'm sorry, I'm on seizure medications and everything. I'm having a little bit of a time here if you're aware of that. I had no time to get out of the way. I was run down like an animal. I was knocked unconscious for several minutes. When I came to, there was people standing over me saying, "You okay? You were just hit by an airplane." Got to me, got to my feet, when Officer Toby Williams come through the gate, just started questioning me, when Chief Getchel called Williams on his cell phone and told him to come to the terminal as he was with the fellow that tried to kill me. Getchel ordered Williams to stop the investigation and not to interview any witnesses. I was advised by Chief Getchel, I'm sorry, not to interview any of the witnesses, I advised Getchel of the restraining order. He laughed, saying there wasn't a judge in the county or the state that would issue such an order against this fellow. That indicated to me that Chief Getchel knew this man. Chief Getchel refused to look at the restraining order, taking his handcuffs off, saying, "If you don't start walking, you will be coming with me." I was never even offered EMS. I had to drive myself to the hospital with a fractured skull, even went so far as to call Putnam County Sheriff's Department and told them, "Do not respond to my calls nor take a report," that nothing happened. I have civil court certified depositions from witnesses under oath proving the attempted murder. I took, I'm sorry again, I have, and Palatka police still refused to look at or interview the witnesses, so maybe now Palatka will get a lawful chief and criminals will be prosecuted, not protected. I look forward to meeting with the new chief of police, hopefully to correct the wrong that Chief Getchel did to me and my family, and show me the justice system still works. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to make a public comment?
My name is Roxanna Reagan-Weeds, 16-year resident of the city of Palatka. Because many members are majority leading the commission, and the vice president of the commission of the police.
Can you speak a little louder, ma'am? We can't hear you.
Yes. I have issues I'm going to address. I've condensed them as short as I could to keep in three minutes, and I will strictly read it from there. Numerous complaints, notices, and supporting documents have been submitted to members of this commission, the current and former mayor, the current and former city manager, the city attorney, and the chief of police regarding official misconduct, bid tampering, waste of taxpayer monies, misuse of grant funds, conflicts of interest, and other acts that were not addressed either publicly or in private meetings with citizens. I believe the most damaging act to the citizens has been their failure to address reported unethical, unlawful, and unconstitutional behavior by members of the Palatka Police Department, destroying public trust and raising questions of their motives and ability to serve the community. That's the legacy I'll remember before. We swore an oath, and it was your duty to protect our interests as a whole, not those of department heads or selected individuals and businesses. Therefore, I'd like to express my gratitude to the voters of Palatka for their decision to replace the incumbents of this city's government, appointed police chief for his resignation, and after reading the comments in today's Palatka Daily News of City Manager Simler, I would offer the suggestion that you look elsewhere than in-house for an interim police chief. Thank you.
Anyone else like to make a statement at this time? Please come forward, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Winston Williams. I'm actually a fair housing advocate with Community Legal Services of Mid-Florida. We're a pro bono law firm, and we offer services to 12 counties throughout the state. And I'm just here to introduce myself to you guys and let you know some of the work that our law firm does in your county. I, like I said, am a fair housing advocate, and fair housing law comes out of the Fair Housing Act. Housing Act of Matteen 68, which is a part of the Civil Rights Act. It's actually Title VIII of that. And what the fair housing law basically does is cover individuals from discrimination within housing. So there are actually what are called protected classes under that, and everyone in this country falls under at least one protected class if not multiple. Those protected classes are race, color, national origin, religion, physical or mental disability and familial status, which is having someone under the age of 18 in your household. And it covers renting, buying, advertising, financing, purchasing of property, homeowner's insurance and accessibility to buildings for disabled individuals. And what I do basically as far as a fair housing advocate is, I communicate with community organizations to ensure that citizens have education as far as what the Fair Housing Act states and what the laws are that revolve around housing. I also do presentations to community boards like this one. I attend a lot of city council meetings as well as county board meetings, especially planning and zoning boards, to ensure that everyone's aware of their, basically when we receive federal funds, you have an issue here where you have to affirmatively further fair housing, the way HUD phrases that. So we're going to continue to ensure that all of our citizens have access to affordable housing and fair housing. And I just look forward to working with the organizations in this county and the surrounding counties with you guys, because there's a lot of work to be done. And I think that we have really good teams and people who are really dedicated to helping individuals who find themselves with issues with their housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, can I just make a point?
Yes.
You know, we don't have any control over the Palatka Housing Authority. It doesn't come under our purview. And also, you know, as my understanding is a real estate broker, that, you know, real estate brokers and agents have responsibility under the fair housing, and so that doesn't also have, we don't have any purview over real estate professionals either, so.
Did you guys approve any zoning or planning changes or amendments to those types of scenarios? For instance, if there was a homeless shelter that wanted to change the zoning for a specific location to allow them to be, have a sheltering application, that's something that you guys approved?
Well, it's either permissible use by, in the zoning district or not, I mean.
Yeah.
So those types of things are also what we push for. It's a HUD mandate, and we also have enforcement capabilities that are granted to us because we are a law firm. So we do as well file suits against individuals or corporations or organizations that go against the Fair Housing Act. So just let you guys know what we do.
And your law firm is who?
Community Legal Services of Mid-Florida. We're based out of Daytona.
They have an office there.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address the commission? There being no one, we'll close the public comment. We're now on item three, the consent agenda. Item 3A is adopt resolution number 2014-10-138, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest a construction maintenance agreement with FDOT, construction and maintenance of the urban bike path trail beginning east of North US 17 Reed Street to the west side of Memorial Bridge. Item 3B is adopt resolution number 2014-10-139, accepting the Pricemarken Community Facility USDA grant improvements as completed and providing certification of completion to USDA. Item 3C, adopt resolution number 2014-10-140, authorizing the execution of FEMA 1785-43-R Grant Agreement Modification to amend the project budget from $284,372 to $445,404, and this is a $334,121 federal share and a $111,373 city share. Item 3D, adopt resolution number 2014-10-141, authorizing execution of SC Clan Construction, Inc., change order in the amount of $375,000 for the construction of floating docks, and this is phase three of the riverfront improvements. Item 3E, adopt resolution number 2014-10-142, awarding the bid for purchase of police vehicles from AutoNation in the amount of $106,018 for administrative vehicles and to Beckford in the amount of $274,392 for patrol vehicles and authorizing purchase of said vehicles. Item 3F, adopt resolution number 2014-10-143, authorizing the execution of a Florida Department of Corrections Work Squad contract for an additional Department of Corrections Work Squad. Item 3G, adopt resolution number 2014-10-144, supporting Joseph C. Diamond's nomination of the Century Block to the National Register of Historic Places, formerly known as the 100 Block. Item 3H, appoint Butch M. Peryear to the Code Enforcement Board as alternate member for the remainder of a three-year term to expire December 2015. Item 3I, approve request items for special permit number 14-56, Palatka Main Street, Third Friday Downtown Street Party for monthly occurrences through December 2015. Dates for 2014 are November 21st and December 19th. Dates for 2015 are January 16th, February 20th, March 20th, April 17th, May 15th, June 19th, July 17th, August 21st and September 18th. Time from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Palatka Main Street Incorporated, Charles Rudd, Main Street Manager, applicant. Item 3I, one is grant permission to exceed allowable noise levels through duration of event. Item two is grant permission to sell and consume alcoholic beverages throughout the event. And item three is allow closure of the 200, 300 and 400 blocks of St. John's Avenue for the event. Item 3J is approve request items for special event permit number 14-55, Azalea City Cruisers, Palatka Main Street, Fourth Saturday Downtown Cruise Inn for monthly occurrences through September the 2015. Date for 2014 are November 22nd, December 27th. Dates for 2015 are January 24th, February 28th, March 28th, April 25th, May 23rd, June 27th, July 25th, August 22nd and September 26th. Time from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, Palatka Main Street Incorporated, Charles Rudd, applicant. Item, subitem one is grant permission to exceed allowable noise levels through duration of events. Subitem two, grant permission to sell and consume alcoholic beverages throughout the event. And subitem three is allow closure of 200, 300 and 400 blocks of St. John's Avenue for the event. Commissioners, any reason to pull any of these for discussion?
I'd pull item G.
Item G will be pulled for discussion.
Could I make a comment? I see what we're doing some stuff with FEMA, and I talked to the city manager and told him that we need to make sure we keep all our receipts and money spent because the league now is representing several cities that got FEMA money, and they came back on them after four or five years. And I wanted to make sure that we all knew that that was something that needed to be done.
Okay. Well, wait just a minute. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes.
Second. Okay, we have a comment on item consent agenda, item E.
Chrisby Sanford, 311 G Street. Could you tell me how many cars this is, how many cars this makes the police department own, and how many are insurance after these are added?
Well, I don't have that information.
Ms. Sanford, these are replacement cars. They're on the five-year replacement schedule. So we buy the cars.
And keep them for five years?
We keep them for five years, and what we're doing over the last...
And you don't know how many cars are coming?
Eleven. There's eleven vehicles there. That's in the staff report. That's in the staff report.
And are they all energy-efficient cars?
Yes, they are. They're all very efficient cars.
And how many cars does the police have?
I think there's 43.
More than one per person.
No, that's not correct.
It's not? I thought there were thirty-one people in the car.
Sanford, make your comment.
That's my comment. I think it's unexamined, and I'm just examining it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comment. Any other comments?
And that's why you're going too.
Okay, we have pulled item G. Is there a motion?
Yes.
There's a motion and a second.
I'd like to discuss item G.
Well, let's approve the others.
I'm sorry.
There's a motion and a second to approve all items except item G.
Question.
Question's been called. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, like sign. Stand's approved. Okay, item G, Commissioner Leary.
Well, Mayor, you know, I really have some concern about this, not that I think that the buildings would qualify for the National Historic Register, but, you know, we've been how many months, city attorney, since we signed the contract, Mr. Diamond? And let me just say, I like Mr. Diamond, I think he's a great guy, and, but I don't think that I would like to tie our future commissioners' hands in maybe making the decision to tear these buildings down if things don't materialize. And I just think that if we do this, it is going to be more difficult, and if they were to be designated on the National Historic Register, it'd make it almost impossible to tear down, and then our eyesore continues for how many more years? So I'm just going to have a hard time supporting this.
Okay, sir.
Mr. Leary, Thad Prokland, Director of Commissioner Leary. I did discuss this with Mr. Diamond. We had two parts of this, preservation board. Part one was this, which was a resolution supporting the nomination to the National Register of Historic Places. Part two was local designation. National Register does not have any teeth essentially. It does not affect how anyone uses the property. Only if there's federal funds involved that the property owner have to comply with historic preservation standards. What the National Register status would do for Mr. Diamond is allow him the option of using the 15% federal tax credits and renovation, which would help to make his project viable. And he is considered as options. We were supporting that just to provide him some flexibility. Now, we put off the local designation. I would prefer to carry this here, you know that I believe in a certain amount of local regulation of our historic projects, from my professional background. But we did put that off. So with the local designation becomes, quote, teeth, the regulation, design review and whatnot. The National Register doesn't carry any of that with it. So I think that it was safe to say that it was also Mr. Diamond's decision, even if you adopt this resolution, the resolution can opt of support, he can withdraw his application. It is his application to the National Register. Therefore, if he decides he does not want to pursue it, he does not have to pursue it.
Yes.
So, Thad, can you tell me, I mean, what the status of the next phase of, or maybe Mr. Diamond could come up and tell what the next, I mean, where are we in construction? I haven't seen anything done. I mean, and I can tell you that, you know, I leave this commission with a lot of regret about those things not being torn down.
Item 11, you Diamond, we're...
Mr. Diamond, would you please come forward, please?
Good evening, Corky Diamond, 110 South Secretary of Public Security. I'm not quite certain, Mr. Murray, what you're concerned about, so perhaps further to discuss.
When we talked several months ago, you were in the process, I thought, of starting some major construction. And, I mean, unless I'm missing something, I haven't seen anything done. And, you know, I'm concerned about any designation, whether it has residual or factual, you know, precedence for the commission in the city with respect to those buildings. So, and I certainly trust Thad, he's much, got a lot of knowledge in this. So I guess I'm just, you know, interested as I leave where we are and when things are going to start happening.
Sure. So I guess from the economic standpoint, we have pushed the $300,000 cash into the project. Do you have what in the building throughout the building, you'd love to take it to a walk and survey it? We're in the process right now of finalizing engineering and the design. We will start physical work within the next four weeks. We're also working right now on the St. John's River Center, so this is a combination of two projects. We've been working with Mr. Crowe and trying to get it designated as an example of how to designate a building could actually increase interest in others coming to Palatka. If after we designate this one good area of ours as a certain district, we may be able to move that down the street, because there are benefits from saving buildings and tax credit incentives that we believe that will not only help preserve buildings but generate income jobs. So there's a much bigger picture. I could probably take 45 minutes and take you through it.
That's fine. You answer my question.
We're committed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Can I say something?
Yes.
It's not about his buildings, but some of us have lived here all our lives, and we know that some of the buildings that we have downtown are older buildings and probably need to go into whatever process it does to say that they're historical. And that historical stuff brings people to towns to view and see them, and I'd like for us to pull together a list of some of our buildings and maybe put some information or some highlights of that, say what they were in the days when they were prepared. You've got a lot of history.
Commissioner?
I just wanted to make a comment on tying any future commissioners' hands. If memory serves me, and I believe it does, I thoroughly went over Mr. Diamond's contract. Mr. Diamond has been given 50 years to do this project, so I think that we basically tied any commissioners' hands when we passed the contract.
Should I, could I comment? Mr. Holmes?
There's a buyback in there, yes.
It's not quite there.
It was two years?
Yeah, okay. I move approval of item G. There's a motion to approve item G by Commissioner Leary, seconded by Commissioner Kitchen. Any further discussion?
I've got one question. If we're not going to, if you get the designation today and you ended up with federal funds a year from now, two years from now, how difficult would it be that the project does not, is not completed to be in here on those buildings?
Commissioner Norman, I'm not a tax expert, but my discussing with the state, the federal tax credits pertain directly, in this case, to Mr. Diamond's tax return, business tax return each year. The burden is on him to make his case to the IRS essentially, as he is complying with applicable standards. Does that answer your question in some way? Now, that does not, it doesn't, the tax credits and the national registration does not affect the buildings in terms of being able to tear them down or keep them or anything. It's just a designation that comes with some sort of incentives.
And just to add, I want to have a thing that probably bring closure to this. Until we complete the project 100%, and they come out and look at it and make sure that we've done everything we can, they wouldn't find us tax credit. So there is an incentive for us to complete what we first have.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thad, you may, or Mr. Diamond, either one, whoever has the answer to it. If I understood you, Thad, it's Mr. Diamond's application?
That's correct.
What significance does the cities either supporting or not supporting the application really have?
We have been named a certified local governor, and essentially the arrangement to certify local governors, a partnership between the National Park Service, the state of Florida and the city of Palatka, as other cities have. And what this arrangement requires is that we have a National Register nomination, that the city, in essence, get behind that.
Support.
Preservation board vote on it, and then the commission supports the resolution. So that's the procedural aspect of it.
So it's required in order for him, in order for his application to be considered, would be required if the city supported?
That's correct.
And then, did I also understand you to say that being on the National Register has no significance in terms of whether or not the buildings are torn down or not torn down?
Only if federal funds are involved. If federal funds are involved, then there is a certain amount of use required.
So when the federal funds, okay, so, let me ask the question, the next question, and I guess I just might ask it wrong. Is getting a big building on the National Register of Historic Places a prerequisite to acquiring federal funds?
I don't believe so. I don't think the two are related.
Well, then, I guess that I don't understand...
Okay, well, okay. Jonathan?
The restriction that he's referring to, the one that I think you're questioning, is when you get federal or state grant funds, then they require you to execute contracts. A private enterprise cannot get federal or state grant funds for a privately held property. So it's a moot point.
So the only thing he's getting is, would be a tax incentive for his own business tax.
And you see a tear down a building on the National Register, they just request that you adopt it.
Adopt it if they're tearing it down?
No, you go and you ask them to go on to.
Let's move on here. We've got a motion and a second.
Question.
Question's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign.
Aye.
It's approved. Item four, resolution amending fiscal year 2013-14 budget through 9/32014. Mr. Reynolds.
Matt Reynolds, Finance Director. This, these budget amendments are going to be the last budget amendments for the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. First, they statute we're allowed to amend the budget up to 60 days after the end of the fiscal year. And this basically, for the majority of these budget amendments, they're basically just kind of a budget thing for projects that weren't fully completed by the end of the year, other things like that. However, there's one budget amendment included in these that I thought was important to get up and discuss. I wrote quite a bit of information into the agenda summary, so that the mayor and commissioners would be able to read that. And that budget amendment is basically a reclassification of the amount that the general fund has, quote, advanced to the golf course, beginning in fiscal year 2009. At the end of fiscal year 2008, the city took out a loan to, for the golf course to cover all of the amount that it had been advanced for prior years up to that point. And in 2009, it basically reset to zero. So, starting in fiscal year 2009 up until fiscal year 2013, the general fund had advanced approximately $1,156,000 of golf course fund. And basically was considered an advance, which means that in the general fund, it was booked as an asset, kind of as a receivable. And in the golf course fund, it was booked as a liability that the golf course fund owed the general fund. During the audit last fiscal year, the auditors noted and discussed with Mr. Moore and myself the fact that the unrestricted net position of the four enterprise funds was a negative balance because of the large amount of liability in the golf course fund. That negative amount was higher than the positive unassigned fund balance in the general fund, which is basically the amount of money that the general fund has that is pretty clear and used on for whatever purpose. The auditors, you know, noted that they were considering including a finding in the audit report of a deteriorating financial position within the city. That one aspect of the unrestricted net position of the four enterprise funds, that negative amount being higher than the unassigned fund balance in the general fund, that's just one factor that they use. They've got an extensive document that they basically go through and kind of look at different trends of the city, different ratios and things like that. And they kind of, it's kind of a, somewhat of a subjective finding. So in order to resolve that one issue, in these budget amendments, we're proposing to reclassify that and basically turn it into a transfer to the golf course fund, where it will be taken off of the assets of the general fund, will be removed as a liability in the golf course fund. Doesn't affect cash balances of the general fund or anything like that. It's basically just a book that we exercise to eliminate that liability in the golf course fund, which will cause the unrestricted net position of the four enterprise funds to become positive again.
Any question?
So I guess basically what we're doing is just writing it off.
Correct. It's basically taking that off of the books. Hopefully, at some point in the future, the golf course fund will become profitable again, and it can begin transferring some money back to the general fund. However, that will be to cover administrative expenses.
Any other, only other comment? Again, when we look at this, is the real probability of the golf course paying that previous, we'll just say loan back is probably very low. So, and then we also, so for all practical purposes, we're doing exactly what you just said. There's the airport, as you know, Mr. Reynolds had talked about, but they, there's some shortfall in the airport. There's some money owed the general fund for that, but we believe that the opportunities and the probability that the airport will be self-supporting, as well as being able to pay back the general fund is probably a lot higher probability, and therefore, we want to keep that loan in place. So this would improve our financial position, and we're recommending that we adopt this proposed resolution.
Mayor, when we got that loan, it took a lot of our money that we would have had to pay back. It changed that loan for us. It took it down, so it wasn't as big as it was, the interest and stuff. And when they put it into that one thing, it means that we are trying to minimize the loss.
Madam Clerk, would you read the resolution, please? Any other questions, Mr. Reynolds? Would you read the resolution, please?
A resolution of the City of Palatka, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget.
It's approved. There's a motion by Commissioner Leary, seconded by Commissioner Kitchen. Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Brown? Commissioner Kitchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Leary?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes. It's approved by a vote of five to zero. Item five is a resolution waarring the bid for management and administration of the City of Palatka abandoned foreclos and vacant properties program to Community Champions per results of a request for proposals and authorizing execution of a contract for services for a period of two years for adoption. Madam Clerk.
A resolution of the City of Palatka, Florida, awarding the bid to administer the City of Palatka's registration and management of vacant foreclosed and abandoned properties program to Community Champions and authorizing the city manager to sign a two-year contract with Community Champions for said services. I have.
It's approved. There's a motion for approval. Is there a second?
A second.
A second for commission, by Commissioner Kitchen. Commissioner Brown.
On that meeting, that was one that I was, off a league meeting, it was May 8th, and it means that the city is not having any expense in taking care of this, that it will be taken care of without any cost to the city when they do it.
That's correct.
Chief.
That is correct. And this is something that, you know, has been certainly a pet peeve of mine, that, you know, these bank properties predominantly be held accountable, and they keep them cleaned up. I mean, you know, we can't revitalize neighborhoods if banks are ignoring the ordinance. So this company will take that over. And, Chief, I even think we get a small stipend, don't we?
$200 fee, the company would take 100, City takes 100, is the way it works. And actually, since you passed the ordinance, we've had quite a few banks actually contact us trying to register. So they're fully aware of the program. We believe that they're gonna comply, that this company would administer it. There are, there would be some indirect costs, obviously, in any contract. We have to oversee that, but as far as out-of-pocket expenses, there are none to the city.
I was open in the neighborhood yesterday where banks actually hold, and they've been hostage because of their foreclosed housing. They're just not taking care of it right. So.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Question.
Question's been called. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kitchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Leary?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown? And Mayor Myers?
Yes. It's approved by, it's adopted by a vote of five to zero. We're in the public hearing section of the agenda. Item six is an ordinance amending Chapter 94 of the Code of Ordinances to move home occupation standards from the definition section to the supplementary zoning regulations section and prohibit business signs for such uses. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, amending Chapter 94 zoning to relocate home occupation standards from the definition section to supplementary zoning regulations and prohibiting business signs for such uses, providing perseverability and providing an effective date.
Some, second. There's a motion by Commissioner Norwood, seconded by Commissioner Leary. Is there any questions or discussion? Okay, Mr. Crowe, would you please come forward? Commissioner Brown.
I said, they said no signs for those businesses and homeless, home owned businesses. For years, the only thing that this town has is home owned businesses. And we have been encouraging people now to start their own business. And a lot of them can be done from home. We had in the past, we gave people taxes at home, and it was a business for them. I think that if we want more people to have their own business, if we allow them to have a certain size, a small sign, so that people can find them, because finding businesses out in this town, it's not easy all the time. And I think that we need to really look at not putting those kind of things on our businesses, small ones, if we're trying to help people to get in and young people and start businesses. Now with the computer, people can do a lot of things from home. As a young person, we never had beauty parlors, you know, beauty parlor people did them in their homes. And I know some of those things have changed. Not great big businesses, but we have something in there that says they can't have so many cars, one car, two car parked there. But I think that they have a right to have some kind of signs so that people can find their business.
Mr. Crowe.
Thad, pro client director, Mr. Leary, vice mayor Brown. This change regarding the sign did come from the planning board. The planning board requested the change. In essence, it doesn't limit, it does not limit or restrict in any way home occupations that are currently allowed. What it does, it takes a little ability to have that very small sign. The planning board believed that this was, there was inconsistency, in the sense that the home occupation standard said, quoting this, there should be no change in the outside appearance of the building or premises, where other visible evidence of the conduct of such home occupation. And they felt that that statement was inconsistent with having a business sign. They felt, speaking for them, obviously, they felt that if people knew the address, they could get there. And they felt that this sign was contrary to the intent to make it look like a home, feel like a home, and fit in with everybody. And I'm presenting their.
I have to comment that now people advertise on the computer, and they put it out there, it goes everywhere. And if somebody was looking, even though it has addresses, sometimes it's hard to see and find. And I have people that knock on my house door looking for other businesses in our area. I think that people should have, I think we should govern the size of the sign. You don't want something that's unattractive. But we have several businesses that are in houses that look like houses, but they have a business in them. And I think that we really need to really look and examine this, because it may not affect us right now, but what will it do for the young people we want to bring back here? There are geniuses that working on computers and computer skills, and people have built stuff in their garages and stuff. And I think that we ought to leave it where we can have a right to have an attractive small sign if they have a small business in their residence.
Any other comments? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Question's been called. Madam Clerk. Well, before we do that, we'll open the public hearing on this. Anyone like to speak to this matter? There being no one, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
No.
Commissioner Kitchen?
No.
Mayor Myers?
Yes. It's approved on the first reading by a vote of three to two. Item seven is an ordinance amending Chapter 26, elections to amend precincts, electors, laws governing elections, qualifications of candidates, and duties of the supervisor of elections. First reading. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, amending Chapter 26 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Palatka to amend Section 26-1 precincts, adding provisions related to adoption of state election laws, amending Sections 26-2 and 26-3 related to qualifying elector, qualified electors, amending Section 26-5 qualifying for offices, and amending Section 26-11 pertaining to duties of the supervisor of elections, providing perseverability and providing an effective date.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Kitchen, seconded by Commissioner Leary to approve it. We'll open the public hearing on this. If anyone here would like to speak to the matter, please come forward.
Captain, Tarrell Hill, 614 North Sixth Street. I'm extremely concerned about the timing of the ordinance, as well as the manner it was going to be put in place. I've done some research on it, and I think that before you pass the ordinance, someone should at least provide some compelling governmental interest as to why it needs to be passed, just from a legal perspective, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address this matter? Well, let me talk. Anyone else like to speak? We'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Come here.
I thought we already had something in place. Are we updating stuff that should have been updated before, or what?
Well, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
I think this certainly tracks the new law, or the law that was passed two years ago by the legislature, requiring residency. And quite frankly, I, you know, think that this is some of the most important changes that we could make with respect to that. And I also think it's absolutely ridiculous that somebody that doesn't even live in a jurisdiction can run for a seat. And the legislature addressed that two years ago, and we're two years behind. So I think it's strongly needed.
So what it did?
Commissioner Kitchen.
I agree with Commissioner Leary. The vice mayor has pointed out on many occasions that several years ago, we had a residency requirement in the city. And at some point, long before I got on the commission, and I don't know when it happened, we apparently updated our ordinance concerning elections, probably when some of the state rules changed, or maybe when we went in with the county zoning, the county election times. I'm not sure when it happened. But in the process, somehow or the other, the residency requirement got eliminated. I was not aware of it till the supervisor of elections informed us of it during the candidate information period, which I think was in June. And he informed us then that you didn't have to be a resident of the city to run for the office. You simply had to be a resident on the day you were sworn in. I was astounded, as was all the citizens I talked to, that that was a requirement. I know certainly in Putnam County, you have to be a resident of Putnam County. You certainly can't be a resident of St. John's County, run for county commission, and then the day you get sworn in, become a county resident. So there's nothing wrong with the timing. We just happened to find out about it. And I found out about it because of supervisor of elections was telling all the candidates that at the county, the candidate information session. And I think this is certainly appropriate to make sure that people that live in the city are the ones that run. So I think it's very important. It does not affect, obviously, it does not affect the current candidates elect for our commissioner and mayor elect for the position, but I think it will address problems in the future that might come. And that's all I have to say.
Counsel.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, is the residency requirement or the lack thereof something that's a charter issue rather than an ordinance issue? Is it our charter that specifies the election? I guess the guidelines and the.
It's not covered in the charter.
I don't think the charter speaks to it. That's what the city manager.
Because it's so, we just need to do it by charter amendment instead of by ordinance.
Okay. That answer your question?
That answers the question. I did a little research, too, this afternoon, after Betsy brought this to my attention. And there, it does appear that the courts have upheld residency requirements of reasonable lengths to, in elections. And I'm not talking about the, whatever the legislature did two years ago, but I'm talking about in local elections. They seem to have, while they haven't set a specific standard and said what is reasonable, they have said that two years probably isn't. And then there is a Supreme Court case from the 70s. And, and then there is a Supreme Court case from the seventies, 76, that basically found one year to be appropriate and acceptable. And to the best of my knowledge, that 1976 case has not been in any way countermanded or superseded, and it was a Supreme Court opinion. So, it would appear that a one year is within the bounds of what the courts have allowed to stand.
Didn't we, what hours was six months, wasn't it? Yeah?
You mean way before?
Way before.
I don't know that now.
Just specifying one year. Okay, any other comments or questions?
Question?
Question's been called, Madam Clerk.
Let me ask a question. So, we're voting that it's one year?
That's what the ordinance says, one year.
The ordinance does other things now, too.
Yeah. We're voting, yes. Her question was, the ordinance says one year.
So.
Well, one other thing before we start voting, because I want to be clear on what I'm doing. I'm not moving, I'm, I'm pretty deep in where I was born, so.
We have questions called. Madam Clerk.
But this is, but I'm.
Madam Clerk. Question's been called. I didn't read it before the meeting.
Mr. Norwood?
No.
Vice Mayor Brown?
I'm voting no, because I don't understand, I want to understand it completely before I vote on it.
You didn't read it?
Commissioner Kitchen?
Yes. I read it, and I understand it.
Mr. Leary?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes. It's approved by a vote of three to two.
We got our supervisor of elections here. Can I ask a question? If a person went to sign up to vote, and they weren't a legal resident, wouldn't, don't they check it, to know?
Let's move on to the agenda here. If you want to ask that question, Commissioner, as we get through the agenda, then our supervisor will be here. Item eight. Ordinance adopting an additional homestead ad valorem tax exemption for certain qualifying seniors is authorized by Florida Statute 196.05 to 2012, super senior exemption, second reading for adoption. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, amending Chapter 78 taxation to add provisions providing an additional homestead exemptions to certain qualifying seniors' citizens, granting an additional homestead tax exemption to an owner who has maintained permanent residency on the property for not less than 25 consecutive years, who is a pain age 65, and who has a low annual household income as defined by general law, providing for transmittal, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Kitchen. We'll open the public hearing on this item. Anyone in attendance like to speak to this matter? There being none, we'll close the public hearing.
Question?
Question's been called, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes. Approved by a vote of five to zero. Item nine is an ordinance amending Zoning Code Section 94-2, 94-143, 94-156, defining original or historic use, allowing original and historic uses as conditional uses in historic districts, and providing conditional use criteria for original or historic uses. Second reading for adoption. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, amending Zoning Code Section 94-2, 94-143, and 94-156, defining original or historic use, allowing original and historic uses as conditional uses in historic districts, and providing conditional use criteria for original or historic uses, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Second. It's a motion by Commissioner Norwood, second by Commissioner Kitchen. We'll open the public hearing on this matter. Does anyone like to speak to it? There being none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
Question?
Question's been called, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kitchen?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes. It's approved by a vote of five to zero. Item 10 is an ordinance amending Zoning Code Section 94-2-94-149 and 94-202 to define mobile medical units allowing the use as either a permitted or conditional accessory use or structure in the C2 intensive commercial zoning district. Second reading for adoption. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka, Florida, providing for the definition of mobile medical units, allowing such uses in C2 intensive commercial zoning districts by right or by conditional use permit, and providing criteria for conditional use review, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Kitchen, second by Commissioner Leary. We'll open the public hearing on this matter. Does anyone like to speak? There being no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion?
Question?
Question's been called, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Kitchen?
Yes.
Mayor Myers?
Yes. It's approved by a vote, it's adopted by a vote of five to zero. Item 11 is city manager administrative reports. City clerks report November the 4th, 2014, general election results. Three races, mayor, commissioner, city commissioner group two, and city commissioner group four. Madam Clerk.
Betsy, you're your city clerk. 101 North Second Street, Palatka, Florida. This is the normal report post-election. We're reporting on the election results. They were certified, I believe, yesterday. Mayor Commissioner Terrill Hill won that race. The commissioner group two, Justin Campbell, won that race. And commissioner group four, Rufus Borum, won that race. I believe they're all three present here tonight. And total votes cast in the city, 2,679. And that is almost 50% of the voters, which is, you know, kind of remarkable. As per Section 24 of the city charter, the newly elected members of the Palatka City Commissioner are going to be sworn in at a special meeting set for January the 5th, that's a Monday. It's going to take place at 7:30 in the evening, and the place has been set as the St. John's River State College Auditorium. It's at 5,001 St. John's Avenue, but it actually, I believe, fronts on College Road. And we'll be updating as details become available. You have to report on the vote tallies, and those will be incorporated into the minutes.
Any questions or comments?
Just thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. And congratulations to our winners. I think they're all present here. Congratulations to you. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, through, uh, let's see, two, three, three, three quick things. Just wanted to announce, a few weeks ago, the city was presented with an award at the Florida Planning and Zoning Association. I think Mr. Crowe submitted an award for the environmental award category, and for the Palatka Waterworks Environmental Center. We received this plaque and an award for our proposed application. So, I can pass this around and take a look at. So, very nice work by all the volunteers that, that work at the Waterworks Building. Secondly, we submitted two awards in two of the categories for Northeast Florida Regional Planning Council. One was, I think, an economic redevelopment award, and one was for an environmental award. And we're, we were thrilled to learn that we're going to be, our applications were accepted, and we're going to receive an award here in early December at their meeting. So, that's, that's a very good thing, very hard efforts, and we're rewarded. The only other thing, Happy Thanksgiving. I know we all have a lot to be thankful for, so, Happy Thanksgiving. And then the only thing I had, final, finally, was Chief Getchell wanted to make a brief statement. Chief?
I'm real close to asking you.
Yeah.
Gary Getchell, Police Chief, and you all know that I filed my intent to retire at the end of the year, specifically January 1st. Just want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve you and serve citizens of Palatka. And I know Fisher Brown and Fisher Norwood were actually part of that interview process. I kept all my promises. I stayed longer than I said I would. My plan was to retire at 55. I felt like with the recession that we went through, it was my obligation to manage the police department and help you all get through that, which we did. Everything looks good, but it certainly looks better than it did then. With Mr. Sinmore or Michael coming on board, I felt compelled to help him with his transition. So, I say, and I have thoroughly enjoyed being here, being your police chief. This will bring to a close a 37-year career. I was called to this when I was in the seventh grade, and every day that I've been a policeman and been a local police chief, I thoroughly enjoy it. Friends of mine many years ago, you know, when I entered into this, told me that, you know, Gary, there's going to come one day where you're just going to wake up and say it's time to go. And that day came. And I have absolutely no reservations about my decision. My family's supportive of it. At this point, I want to thank Jesus Christ, my Savior, for allowing me to do things that I've done, and the successes that I've had. I want to thank my wife, who has supported me. And I want to thank my children.
Commissioner Kitchen.
Yes, I think police work is some of the most unrewarding, well, maybe rewarding, but it's one of the most thankless careers you could possibly go into.
Yeah.
Sir?
If you'd like to speak, you're in order to speak. It's my turn to speak.
If you're out of order, you'll be asked to leave the meeting.
Appreciate it, thank you. Police work is one of the most underrated, I think, and unappreciated jobs, because the policemen come in when there's a problem. They don't come in when there's not a problem, when people are happy and everything's going great. They come in when there's an issue. And that alone makes it problematic for them, performing their duty. I have had the pleasure of working with Mr. Get, Chief Getchell since I came into office in 2006. I knew him prior to that, because I've met all the police meetings, because I've always tried to keep up with what's going on with the community, especially the crime trends. It's been my personal experience and my experience as a commissioner to see Gary Getchell is one of the most honest, upright, decent people that I have ever met. He is an outstanding police officer. He's a credit to the uniform. He's a dedicated, moral, highly moral, Christian man who lives by his principles. And I know there's been some mudslinging recently. I have no comment on that, I wasn't involved in it, I don't know the facts. There's always two sides to every story. But I can say that from my experience with him and the people that I know that have had experience with him, that he's a very decent man and a very good man. And he, it's been an honor to work with you, and you will be sorely missed by the City of Palatka. Thank you very much, Chief Getchell.
I'd just like to say, anyone else like to?
I was going to say, TV has been an interesting ride. I've, I've been commissioner for, I think, five, five chiefs of police. And I want to thank you for getting two girls dogs and still one.
Vice Mayor, one of the promises I made you was police athletic league, and.
That's right.
We brought back.
And thank you for that, because you let the girls play basketball, too. And I think that's.
The girls typically do a better job than the boys, anyway.
Commissioner Leary?
Well, I certainly have enjoyed working with the chief, and he's responded to every issue that I've ever brought to him. And, you know, having been served as a planning and zoning director, Thad will tell you that the only most controversial position besides the chief of police or the sheriff is the planning and zoning director. So, good luck, and I wish I could join you in retirement. If you'll adopt my kids, we can work that out.
Well, I've got two adult children looking to be, so.
Chief, I'd like to say, you know, in the day that we, you got hired, and you and I sit down and talk, and there's some things that I would want to be put in place. And I like to say you've done those things. You know, one of the things is to make sure that we have educated, you know, police force. We've done that. One of the things that I asked also, that you make sure that when you leave chief, that we have men, and our ladies, police officers, prepared to step into that road. I think that we've done that as well. I think you did a good job in being the, in governing the reading seed grant that we achieved as well. And I think your organization has also, also done a very good job as well, under your leadership, with the house program, and getting how you are involved, and getting them off the streets, and getting them involved in things that they can also be productive in, that will carry them to life. I think you guys have did a tremendous job of building. That, you know, the more they participate, the more that they can contribute, not only sports, but to this community as well. And I just want to say thank you.
Chief, I'd just like to say I'm very disappointed. I know it's your decision, and you need to do what's best for you and your family. As far as I'm concerned, you're the quintessential small-town police chief. You have high degree of integrity, of honesty, of ability, intelligence, and probably, most importantly of all, morality. And I thank you for being the person you are. You've done a great job of protecting our citizens, and you're leaving Palatka a better place than you found it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, do you have anything else, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Chief Lambert, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Driftet, do you have anything? Thad? Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
Ms. Driggers?
Thanksgiving dinner tomorrow.
Thanksgiving dinner tomorrow at City Hall. Ms. Kitchen?
I just want to wish everybody a very safe and a very blessed Thanksgiving, and we'll see you next month.
Commissioner. Counselor.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner?
Just quickly, Mayor, we had the Golf Course Advisory Committee meeting today, and as you know, I've been the, the commission's liaison to the committee for almost two years now. And the committee wanted me to communicate to the commission their appreciativeness of the work and the leadership that this commission's given, and the, the relationship with Bobby Weed and his golf course management company, and the, the just significant number of improvements that have been made in the last four years.